It's pending.
It's pending, but it's listed. Was it 249?
It was two, 240 something, yeah. Maybe it was 249, 250.
I saw that one.
At this time, I'll call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Here this evening, we have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item then would be consider the approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on January 25th, 2022. Council does have the minutes. Are there any corrections to note?
Make a recommendation to approve the minutes.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Steve to approve the minutes as they have been prepared. We'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda I of number two. This is the project on North First Street, West Redwood Street, West Marshall Street reconstruction project. We'll have a public hearing on the assessment. Following the conclusion of the public hearing, we'll consider the resolution that would adopt the assessment. I'll call on Director of Public Works City Engineer Jason Anderson to conduct his public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. This was a construction project that we completed last summer around the Bremer Bank area. Project well, and it's now completed, and we do have the assessment role completed. You'll note in the packet that we identify the cost breakdown for you. You'll see that wastewater constituted 13.2% of the project, MMU 22.1%, Surface Water Management Utility 17.2% of project costs, Ad Valorem City Participation 24.8% and assessments at 22.7% of project costs. The assessment rate being proposed is 2% plus bond interest rate, which results in a 2.8% interest rate with a repayment term of eight years. You do have the assessment role included in the packet, and I'm here for any questions we may have.
Okay. As part of the public hearing, we'll open up for any public input either from members of the audience or the council. Is there any input as part of this public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by John, seconded by Don to close the public hearing. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the public, or close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll now consider the, the resolution. Are there any questions about the resolution that would adopt the assessment?
I move the approval of the resolution.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll...
I have a quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just looking at the ad valorem, in the past couple of years, that has increased quite a bit, hasn't it, Jason? And then the special assessments, actually, their percentage is going down.
Yes, that's correct, Councilman. We have, with recent changes and adjustments to the special assessment policy, we have taken on more of a burden as a city as a whole and assess less. This percentage on this particular project is a bit higher than we've seen recently because there's more commercial properties, but still that stands that the city is participating significantly more on those properties as well.
Previously, commercial was virtually 100%.
Correct.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote on the motion. And we'll close the voting. Motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda I of number three. This would be the award of bids for Batumino's overlay on various city streets. We have a resolution that would accept the bid and award the contract. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. This is our annual mill and overlay project on local streets. We did have $625,000 included in the budget for this project. On February 2nd, two bids were received with the low bid being provided by Dunick of Prinsburg in the amount of $560,573.35 for their base bid. We did also include a bid alternate for some mill and overlay at the wastewater treatment facility. They've got a road that leads in and runs around the building, and we've included that work with this as an alternate. They had $60,000 in their CIP, and Dunick is, they've got $53,442.50 on that alternate. So, understanding that, the city staff would like to include that wastewater work into this project. We do feel the price was, was as good for our area. And we would also propose that the council authorize staff to award the project to Dunick and not exceed the budgeted amounts included for the project. So, we see a base bid of 560. We'd propose to add an additional street, likely Rainbow Drive, south of Madrid, and then also look to identify other ADA, curb, or mill and overlay improvements on routes that we've already selected for future years. So, stretch the money, get it done this year to offset the burden in the future. And that's consistent with what we've done in the past.
Questions? Craig?
Yeah, just a quick, Jason, do we include engineering costs when we do the mill and overlay? There's not, is there, or is there some?
There's not.
Okay, very, thank you.
Any other questions for Jason?
I have a quick question. I see we're removing the islands from the circles. Is that becoming common throughout Marshall?
So, everywhere we do a mill and overlay project, we do propose to do that work. That's what we've been doing in the last four years for sure. On this particular, these two circles, we have already given advance notice to those property owners. We always reach out and let them know, so there's an expectation. I don't believe we've heard anything adverse on these particular circles. We've actually heard positive responses for that.
Okay. And on that, I believe the benefit to that is, is now with the island gone, you don't pile snow in the middle. You actually load and haul, correct? So, they're actually cleaner with the islands gone.
It makes it a lot easier. So, the issue with the islands, there's usually streetlights, sanitary manholes, and fire hydrants in them. That's not a really great place to pile snow. So, we, on all of our circles, we move it to the middle, and we try to haul it out at a later date. We do not like having those utilities in the center island when we do that work. So, it's really, really advantageous to the street department to get these islands out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, you have the recommendation.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Don. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda I of number four. This would be the project on South First Street, Greeley Street, Williams Street reconstruction. We have a resolution declaring the official intent regarding the reimbursement of the expenditures with the proceeds of tax-exempt bonds, and then we've, following that, we have the resolution that would accept the bid and award the contract. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. This project consists of the complete street and utility reconstruction of South First Street from George to Greeley, Greeley Street from West College to Saratoga, and Williams Street from Maple Street to George Street. On February 4th, we did receive bids, and we received five bids, all very good competitive bids. The low bid being provided by RNG Construction of Marshall for $1,647,498.69. RNG's bid was low by a little over, I think, $150,000. All the other bids were within $60,000 of each other. So, they're very, very good bids. Estimated project with 5% allowance for contingency and 16% engineering and admin costs is slightly over $2 million. All improvements would be proposed to be assessed per the current special assessment policy, and that includes participation from MMU, the Wastewater Fund, Surface Water Management Utility, and City Ad Valorem. We would recommend to award the project and also the, both resolutions included in the packet.
Thank you, Jason. Questions?
Can I say something? What kind of drainage system do you have on your streets when you retard like that?
So, the, Tim's question is drainage underneath the streets, and I'm not sure if you're referring to the resurfacing or the new construction. Go ahead.
Sure, so, go ahead.
The resurfacing and stuff like that, because like my street ain't got no drains right on it. Okay, half these streets don't have drains on them, so the water sits on the street and makes it raise up and breaks our concrete or pavement all apart. I was wondering if you've got anything to clean up?
So, with, with most of our reconstructs, and this one included, wherever we can, we do install subsurface drainage below the street section. So, we, that, that consists typically of six-inch drain tile under each side of the curb and gutter. That has to have a place to outlet, so we need to have a stormwater system in the project area. We do on this particular project, and we will be putting that drain tile in, as well as making other improvements, more intake area, more catch basins, and things like that. We're not adding a lot of storms sewer piping on this project, but we're adding more intake area as well as subsurface drainage. With all of our projects where we have an opportunity to do that, we will. Not all locations in town have that opportunity, but most do.
Okay. Questions for, for Jason on this?
Mr. Mayor, Jason, again, I applaud the low bids that we've got, but I would like to, and I'm going to support the bid, but I'm going to go on record then again that I don't think we need that sidewalk from De Shepherd to Maple, that one block, and I expressed that in committee meeting. And I know fellow council members, if we're talking about sidewalks all the time, we're going to put a five-foot sidewalk on the other end, what I consider the west side of the street. I don't believe we need a five-foot sidewalk on a one-block area from De Shepherd to Maple. I know there's some from De Shepherd to Greeley, but I, I just don't see that, where that's going to be, benefit anybody. That's my opinion.
Okay, other input? If not, you have the recommendation for, first, that's the, the resolution regarding the, declaring the official intent regarding the reimbursement.
I move the intent to reimburse the expenditures of proceeds from tax-exempt bonds.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? Now, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to consider the resolution that would accept the bid and award the contract.
I move the resolution accepting the bid and awarding the contract.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening, and they include consider the approval of the 2022, 2023 township fire contract rates, consider the resolution calling for a public hearing on the street reconstruction plan, tax abatement and issuance of general obligation bonds, consider the application for an exempt permit for United Way of southwest Minnesota, consider the approval of a tobacco license for a family grocery store, the wastewater treatment facility improvement project. We have a, a payment invoice to Bolton and Mink. Consider the lease agreement between Vishay Irel Systems LLC and the City of Marshall, and consider the approval of the bids, or the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for separate discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve all of the items?
I'll second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Don. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda I of number 12 is the project ST 006. This is the RRFB School Pedestrian Crossing Improvement Project. The action before us is the authorization to advertise for bids. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have too much to say about this project. I think the council is aware of what this project is. It's safety enhancement for crossings at various schools, including the middle school, the Southview Elementary School, Parkside Elementary School, and True Light Christian School. It's going to include push-button, flashing light crossers, school zone signage, radar feedback signage. Should be a really nice project. Also, some median improvements on the local routes to help facilitate the crossings. PIT did hear this. PIT's in support. They're, he'll note. All did vote in favor, it looks like. We don't have a bid date yet. We're still waiting on MINDOT approval. There's a few things that they're still concerned about that we have to tidy up. Nothing major, just mostly easements and things like that. So, we'll continue to work on it. So, we're just asking council to give us the go-ahead to advertise once we do get that approval, so we can act quickly when MINDOT gets back to us.
So, you want to make a, a comment about the timing of this, you know, in between the end of school and the beginning of fall? And in, in between there, there's a summer school session and a detour, and so...
Yeah. So, the project will be completed in the summer between school sessions for the most part. I think there may be some disruptions with summer school programs, but we'll have to work to the best of our ability around that. I know Jesse's been working hard with different suppliers on timing and lead times. I know that the, a lot of the equipment has pretty long lead times. So, we may have to do some median work and then install equipment later. We'll have to sort of work that out.
And access to Independence Park ballfields was the other question.
Good point, and we'll, we'll put some thought into that when we bid that as well, that we make sure that it's accessible from one direction or another, and try to minimize the amount of time that we're closing the road.
Any other questions for Jason?
Mr. Mayor, just a comment, you know, on these project proposals, the, we actually had a pretty full P I and T slate, and the, Jason and Jesse have done an awful lot of work on this, and there's a lot of, especially on the school pedestrian crossing. There's been a lot of input, a lot of interaction, and I really appreciate how thorough and well-thought-out this is. And, and it is really representative, a lot of the wants and desires of the community, the school, MINDOT, and us. So, I really appreciate it. I think they, this, these are good proposals, and I think they're good, good project. But we did spend a lot of time on P I and T reviewing them with them, and I really appreciate the work they've done.
Any other input?
Mr. Mayor, Jesse, I had somebody ask me the speed limit flasher DSD. We've got them. Are they, who sets where they're located? Does, does MINDOT, or do we set that, and is it a certain distance from the school?
On the local routes, we can kind of dictate a little bit on where they're located. The state does have some guidance on where those signs are supposed to be located. On the True Light Christian School, that location has to be approved by the traffic office. And that's part of, one of the things that we're kind of working with MINDOT right now was our original proposal has some additional changes that MINDOT's traffic office is requesting. They'd like to shrink this area a little bit. Ultimately, it is their highway. We do have to abide by their rules a little bit, but we're kind of working through some of those details.
Okay, and specifically, I'm going to talk about Southview Drive, because we've got the one coming from High V. Seems like it's right before the curve. Maybe if, Kyle, can you bring that up? It's the very last page. And, and that's fine. I just, I'm just questioning the location, and if we decide, we would decide that one. The city would decide that. Is that correct?
We can make an adjustment if we feel it's necessary. So, the, the state guidance on that is 200 feet in advance of school area or crossings.
And if you go, yeah, it's right there to the very right of the last, on the screen there. It seems like it's right before the curve. And I'm not sure if that's, it's the best location, or if there's a better location. I'm not sure, but...
So, if you were to measure 200 feet from where that location is, it puts you in that first block of Woodford. However, there's an awful lot of school traffic that goes into that east, that east access. So, we felt that it was more prudent to extend the school zone a little bit further back to accommodate for all that entering and exiting traffic that's going to be going in and out of the parent drop-off.
And if we see that's not working, we could always move it.
We can always move it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other input? If not, the action before you, you have is the authorization to advertise for bids.
So moved.
Motion by John, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. Motion passes. Move then to Agenda I of number 13, the project on Lion Street, North Third Street reconstruction. Again, consider the authorization, the request of the proposals for the intersection control evaluation and also for consultant services. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is a kind of an introduction to a 2023 proposed project on our capital improvement plan. West Lion Street from College to Fifth and Third Street from Main to Redwood is currently on the capital improvement plan. It's a downtown reconstruction project, all utilities, all street, sidewalk, pretty much the works. We have had interest from a property owner on Third that owns a lot of property, and that interest is, would the city consider reviewing some different things? And it's a pretty wide-ranging list of topics, but all the way from reviewing the signal light at the intersection of Third and Main and the necessity of that light, reviewing the possibility of making Third a one-way for that one block at least, and a bunch of different ways that maybe we could make it more of a pedestrian and destination feel, more, more area outside for people to congregate. That's the general theme of the request. In addition to removing the signal light, you know, I think it's been talked about that maybe accommodations for a pedestrian crossing could be made. So, with this large of an ask, it is still a pretty short turnaround for us to take all of this into consideration, work with all of the entities and stakeholders that we need to work with, and come to a, a reasonable agreement with our council on how we would want to proceed with the project. Because of the, the scope of this, we'd like the council to consider authorizing staff to seek some proposals from consulting, engineering firms to help with landscape architecture, as well as intersection control evaluation at the state highway intersection. Any change to signal control at an intersection requires these intersection control evaluations through MINDOT. It's unavoidable. So, to even get to the point where they consider allowing a change there, you do need to study it. So, it's kind of open-ended, but you know, at this point, we did go to the PIT committee, and they gave us some solid feedback, and I think there's general support for staff to keep working on this. But the more that we think about it, I just think to help us make the case and have the conversations that we need to have, it'd really be beneficial to start having these consultants in our team providing us with exhibits, options, opportunity, costs, the stuff that people really want to know about as you start to make these decisions. So, I just want to have a discussion with the council about that and, and get some feedback and find out if we're, if we're heading in the right direction. So, I know that PIT did say that they'd like us to meet again with the Downtown Business Group, and I have reached out, and we'll have opportunity to get on their next meeting in a few weeks. And we'll plan to do that, but I, I just think that it may be beneficial for us to start hiring people if there's a realistic thought that we're going to do these things, because we, there's a lot of work to do. So, I'll pause.
Thank you, Jason. Input first from the Public Improvement and Transportation Committee?
Jim, do you want to go first, or? Oh, you can go first. Okay. Well, and again, we did spend an awful lot of time talking about this, and you know, like Jason said, there's a, there's an awful lot of, there's kind of pros and cons, but there's a lot of pressure, or not pressure, but desire and energy to move forward with it by at least one of the significant property owners. And my question back to Jason is, is that when we do the intersection control evaluation, that's also work that MINDOT has done on some of their other projects. Is there a chance, because of the study that's done, I'm guessing that their consultant may well bid on this simply because they already have a lot of the background and should make them pretty competitive, and I'd like to see something like that so that we don't have to kind of re, rehash a lot of things and maybe get a little better, a little better product from them.
That's a, a good observation, Councilman, and that certainly, we will certainly engage with that firm. For example, we had to do one of these evaluations at Fourth and Country Club before we came up with the preliminary idea of what we would do for a project in the future there. And we did hire the same firm that worked on College Drive because of what you said. Their, their price was attractive because of some of the work they'd done in the area. So, we'll see if we can take advantage of that for sure, and we'll definitely have to work with District Eight's traffic office to make sure we're meeting their requirements.
Sure. And then the other, the other piece I'd like to say is that when you think about kind of this whole downtown plaza, you know, the main intersection, the Block 11, the Memorial Park, but then also the, the green space next to City Hall now, and you kind of think about how things fit in, you know, it's, it's a, it's an absolute perfect time to think about this. I don't know what the result will be, but I, I really support moving forward. I, I don't think we had a solid consensus on P I and T because we just didn't know enough, but there's definitely a lot of energy here to move forward and look at it.
Other input?
Oh, Craig did a fine job.
So, the, we're really talking about two separate scopes of study here, one being the stoplight intersection, the other being the streetscape reconfiguration?
Yeah, I think so. There may be opportunity for us to put it together, but we'll have to talk about that internally. We, we haven't determined exactly how we would go about that, but it could be two separate contracts. It could be one with kind of à la carte pricing that we could consider and work through. Yeah.
Judge?
Jason, and just the thought of making Third Street a one-way, is there enough room in there if we did that, narrowed up the street to go to diagonal parking then, to add some more parking space in that area?
Yeah, that's one of the many options that can be considered and why we would probably hire an engineering firm that carries some landscape architects on their team, because we want to consider a lot of different traffic items with this. If you do go one-way, so many things you can do, and a lot of it's going to be input-driven from property owners as well and how they want to see it used. We have had conversations with property owner and the Downtown Business Group. We've had a few of them, actually. And I just don't know that we're going to keep moving it forward as much as we need it to without kind of just taking a step and, and pushing a little harder with the group. Yes, that's an option. I think if you go one-way and add diagonal on both sides, you will increase parking. I don't know that you'll gain a lot of pedestrian space, so that'll be kind of a weighing.
Maybe a trade-off.
Yeah.
Other input?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So, when we look at consultants, whenever I hear consultants, I hear cash outlay. And how much is a consultant going to cost? And that's my first question. The second question is, this is being driven by, by Mr. Mulebrook, who does own a significant amount of property, but I would like to see the entire Chamber of Commerce kind of, all the members vote on this and bring a rec, a recommendation to council.
So, you're right, it will cost money. I don't have a great frame of reference. I do know that we spent less than 20,000, it was 16,000, I think, on the intersection control evaluation. We did it Fourth and Country Club. I'm hopeful it won't cost too much more, but there is typically a, I want to call it a penalty, but MINDOT's a little more expensive to work with than, than we are. We'll put it that way. So, I'm, I'm expecting that. to work with than we are, we'll put it that way. So I'm expecting that to be higher. The landscape architecture type services, I think it's going to be largely driven by how much we lean on them. And it can pretty much be hourly not to exceed type of thing. And then we have to come back and address it with you. You know, I don't know if the city wants to consider, and we'll have to come back to you. We can talk more about costs when we have proposals. We will have to come back to you to get approval to enter into contracts. You know, we will have to at some point in time talk about who pays for these things. You're correct. And maybe the city can cover some costs with the design and consultants, and maybe the property owners have to pay for some of the treatments if they go in. Maybe that's one way we can do it, but.
And will MINDOT pay because of their highway, unlike the Country Club Drive where those were both city streets?
We have engaged the D8 Traffic Office. I know they've had conversations. They were going to at the front end of this week. We haven't heard back yet on their ability to participate, but we are trying to encourage them to work with us on the ICE report and participate financially.
Because they would also benefit if that stoplight was removed. They wouldn't have to maintain it.
That's the case we've made to them. I think it's really advantageous to them. If they have a drive and folks that actually want the signal to come out, that's a very, it's not something that happens very often for them, and they should take advantage of it and maybe participate.
Maybe on our approvals for the College Drive piece of shutting a couple intersections there, we can, we haven't signed off on that yet, have we?
Any other input? Russ?
Jason, just a question. If this doesn't fly through all the channels that has to go, can it be pushed back to 2024? I mean, is there a reason that we have to get it done in 2023?
It can be. The urgency, I think, is just driven by what you see. I think it's getting worse and worse. The street conditions are for one. The water main is poor, very undersized, doesn't really serve the area how it needs to be to current standard. There are water service materials that aren't good that we need to get out of there. There's a lot of things that need to get addressed. Without thinking about it real hard, I think that it could potentially get pushed a year if it had to, and we would still jump out in front of College Drive, for example, in 2025 and maybe get that done. But 2023 is preferred from our standpoint, but we could keep talking about that if we had to. Thank you.
If there's no other input, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize requests for proposals for the ICE and Project ST009.
Motion by Craig.
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to the agenda item number 14, the project on West Lion Street, College to First, the reconstruction project will consider the resolution ordering the preparation of the report on the improvement. Once again, Jason.
Thank you. So this is a one-block stretch of Lion Street from College to First that was originally scoped into this last year's Z82 project that we just did the assessments on. Staff pulled it out when we weren't certain how Block 11 would come to fruition and what would be needed on the block. We wanted to make sure that if we invested those kind of funds that we did it right the first time. So at this point in time, we're requesting that council consider ordering the preparation of the feasibility report for this project. This is the first step in a special assessment project. With the possibility of street reconstruction and utility work being required for a Block 11 development, we just want to be sure that we're in a position to deliver a project this year in the event that we need to. So this doesn't commit the city to any project. We can terminate this process at any point in time, but we just think it'd be prudent to start this process because it does take quite a few council meetings for us to get to the point where we're awarding a contract. So by doing this, we essentially have your blessing to work on designing the project and keep it moving. And we don't have to do anything until we know we have to do something.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Any question for Jason?
Well, I just want to add on that. As you look at this project, and this is more for the downtown businesses, there's probably three driveways on this schematic that could possibly be removed, and we had that discussion at PINT, because we know parking is an issue downtown. And with the redevelopment of Block 11, we're becoming more pressure there. So just as you look at this, like Jason told us at PINT, this is just preliminary, but there's a good potential of three of those driveways disappearing and adding parking. So I just wanted to add that for the downtown committee, for all the downtown people watching us.
Thank you, Jim. Any other observations or input?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Russ.
Just a point. I know my fellow Councilman Lozinski has always been pretty adamant about narrowing streets and saving money.
Yeah, thank you.
To make sure that he knows that this street is going to be widened.
Well, for parking.
Good.
It's for parking, Russ.
I know. Just thought I'd let you remind you of that.
I think we show up by smaller cars, and we could shrink this street instead. They used to make UGls.
But you've been pretty adamant about saving money on narrowing streets.
We're actually considered adding a parking lot, not narrowing a street, we're adding a parking lot.
Okay, any other input?
You're flexible.
Not, what's the, what's the counsel on preparing the report on this proposed project?
I'll recommend that.
By Jim, seconded by Don. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number 15, consider the proposal from SRF Consulting Group for Design of City Utilities on MINDOT's 2025 Drive, College Drive Reconstruction Project. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. So once MINDOT determined that they were going to hire SRF to do the complete design for them on College Drive in 2025, it's a massive design contract. We thought it would be prudent to reach out and find out what a proposal would cost to have them do our water main and sanitary sewer design along with MINDOT's plan set. Really makes for an easier process because they're doing literally all of the design work if they can just include that in there. And we don't have to try to create sheets to be incorporated into their work. A lot of things get crossed up that way. The proposal you have in your packet, it's proposed at a not-to-exceed amount of $62,598. We did take this to PAT for their input. I think there was, there was good discussion about it, and the committee can speak as they'd like. But this, I should note, this doesn't include Brew Street intersection. If MINDOT does in fact extend their project into the Brew Street intersection, which we really hope they do for our sake, for the utility work we need to get done there, this may cost a little more than this. We may have to come back and, or somehow alter this amount. But we would recommend to approve it. We think the number's a little, it's a little higher than we had hoped, but it's a four-year design process. It's just going to, it's going to cost a few dollars, so.
And when would you expect to hear from MINDOT if the extensions through the Brew Street intersection will be included?
I reached out today and left a message. I've been looking for an update myself, so.
Okay. Questions?
Well, not just question, but a comment. Jason, I believe at PAT, you strongly recommended this because to tie the two projects together, if we brought in our own engineering firm, MINDOT's not a big fan of that, and they're very particular how they want everything drawn on a plan, correct?
Yes. And, you know, we could do this ourself as well, but they're very particular. You know, everything down to the line type, the text, where things go on the plan sheet. I mean, everything's very specific to them. We don't design in their world. So you spend so much time on the minutia, it's expensive. They use a different design program than we do. We would have to be exporting files into a different program and hoping it transfers. It's just, sharing wouldn't be very easy. It makes a lot of sense. It would cost us a lot of money with our own staff, too.
Other input? If not, is there a motion to accept a proposal from SRF Consulting Group?
So moved.
Seconded by Russ, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion passes.
Made it.
Just in time.
Just got in there.
We'll move then to agenda item number 16, the authorization to advance rental ordinance by obtaining landlord input. Sharon, I'll let you introduce this topic. I know this was discussed by Legislative Ordinance Committee, and then you can then turn to Ilya. Sharon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, we did have two Legislative and Ordinance Committee meetings to discuss a proposed short-term licensing ordinance. And I know that Ilya has put forth some good statistics here on amount of short-term rentals within the city in Marshall, and we also have some comparable data. Part of this was initiated by a complaint on a neighboring property that was doing short-term rentals with no prior authorization. And currently, we have nothing in ordinance that would regulate or license that particular issue that occurred. So really good staff discussion. And we have come to the point where, and I know Ilya will explain this, that we'd like to get further input. And if we recall back in 27, 2018, you know, one of the things I think that business owners or people who owned property really wanted to have was input. So tonight's request kind of gets down to can we advance this to get input? And we're not sure it's all going to be highly supportive. So an introduction of this prior to that meeting is probably helpful for you as council members to know what might be coming your way. So I will turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor, to have further discussion.
Okay. And Ilya, you have, go ahead.
Just thinking, Mayor Council, just want to confirm what Sharon said. It's been started with a short-term rental. The Legislative Ordinance Committee suggested that we go in a different route, that we go through the rental ordinance to cover the short-term rental. We started writing the ordinance. We presented it to Legislative Ordinance Committee. It was generally received very well. And staff thinks right now that it would be a good step, next step, to talk to the local landlords and have their input and comments before proceeding with that thing. So that we asked for council approval of that course of actions.
Okay. Input from the council or from the Legislative Ordinance Committee? This really is not for specific action, but to really the level of interest and seeking the input from the landlords. Jim?
I know, I think it is myself, are we suggesting any landlords involved? Because as I've looked at different rental ordinances, and I've been involved in different rental ordinances, some are very strict, some are not. I think it's good that we would take a look at this, have them involved. I think it's good that we maybe get one. You know, other communities I'm involved with, the rentals, they have them. I know I've been very adamant about these not overstepping their bounds, and Ilya and the staff have been very good about saying, no, we're not going to do that. So I think this is a good start. And this is a spot for landlords. Let us hear what you want to say. If you don't show up and don't say nothing, then John, I, and I don't know who else is on Legislative Ordinance, is it you, Russ? Steve?
No, I'm small.
You know, then we have to do this off of what we hear on the street, and we don't want to do that. We want to hear you in a public place telling us how you feel and what you think about this.
Thank you, Jim. Any, John?
Just like to add in there, I think where, you know, we started and Ilya did just what we asked. He started coming in with a short-term rental. And at least from my viewpoint, it looked like we were starting to add things in on short-term rental that were good, but we didn't even have on our own rental, regular rentals. So that's where it kind of morphed into this. And I think we're going in the right direction on that. We're looking at things that are basic, you know, safety issues. You know, there's nothing really I would call outlandish, but on the other hand, I'm not a landlord. So I think getting that input from the landlords is good. Some of them may like it, some of them may not. But, you know, it still is, you know, we're looking at reality, about 50% of our community is renting. And so just having that guidelines and certifications and various things going on is good for the community. So, yeah, I'm wanting to move ahead on this as well, so.
Sharon?
Yeah, I didn't, I failed to mention that one of the other really important consultations was with our fire chief, and he is here tonight as well. And I don't know if he wanted a comment, but just kind of that focus on life safety that Councilmember De Kramer mentioned, that's really the main goal with a start on this particular program. So I just wanted to add, we did get input and consultation from the fire chief as well.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Craig?
Mr. Mayor, along those lines, I just want to say that, you know, a number of years ago, when I was chairman or president of the local chapter of the Red Cross, we had an incident at a rental where there was some substantial non-compliance. But by the grace of God and kind of the people living there in the fire department, that went without casualty. But it could have been very serious, and it's not too dissimilar than an incident that happened in New Ulm some years ago that really drove them to get a solid rental ordinance and actually led to a full-time inspection person that actually, a fire marshal that inspects and takes care of that business. So our community is in such a way that we do get some density sometimes that we're unaware of. And I think we need to do this to protect the citizens and residents that are using those. And it also, if we do it right, should give some leverage to the landlords also to do the things that they need to do. So I really support this. I'm glad we're moving forward on it. It's something that I've wanted to see us go, but I'm really concerned. And I'm glad to see that we're doing it right, because if we start off wrong on this, we do damage and not good. And I'm really glad that we're moving forward the way we are, and I really support it.
Any other input? Thank you, Craig. If not, is there a motion to advance this rental ordinance proposal by the next step? And that would be getting landlord input.
So moved.
Motion by Steve, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Thank you, Ilya.
Thank you.
Thanks, Oya.
We'll move then to agenda item number 17, consider appointments to various boards and commissions and authorities. The, prior to tonight's meeting, the councils met on a couple of occasions. And based on interviews of applicants to different boards and commissions, I would recommend that Suver Sable and Rafael Oniega would be appointed both to terms on the Community Services Board. Both of their terms would expire February 28th of 2025. And that Anne Marie Vorbach would be appointed to an unexpired term on the Library Board, and that term will expire December 31st, 2023. I'd offer that as a recommendation to the council and entertain a motion to affirm.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by, motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. The motion passes. We'll move then to Commission Board Liaison Reports. From my standpoint, the Southwest Regional Development Commission will meet this coming Thursday. The Fire Relief Association, Board of Trustees, and the membership had their annual meeting with, last week. And the, reviewed the performance of the fund through presentation by the fund manager, which is Bremer. The fund has performed well. Quentin and Carla, you correct me, but I believe the rate of return was right around 11% in 2021. They also reviewed not only the withdrawals from the fund in the past year, that is through retirements, but also the anticipated retirements that will occur this coming year. In other words, the, the fund is being well managed and is in good shape and is really there as a, both an incentive and a reward for the volunteer firefighters that, that serve. They're also, within the There are also, within this past year, there was a change of officers. And the current chair is Ryan Serene. And there's the other slates of officers have, there's been some rotations there, too. So, and that's by, by election by the members. Quentin or Carla, anything that should be added that I didn't? Okay. Okay, Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Airport Commission met last week. Jason, you're going to have to kind of help limp me through this. But number of good things happening out there. The roof project, the repair to the rival building went well. There was a lot of need there. And they found a few things that answered some questions about some missing insulation and things. So the repairs went very well, and I think we're good there. Number of projects that Jason and Jess are working on for, you know, cracked ceiling and some other things with Minnesota Department of Transportation Aeronautics and some grants. And of course, we spent a lot of time talking about Helena and kind of where things go with that. That seems to be the, kind of the primo subject. And of course, there's a lot of concern with the group that we, you know, continue to move forward and do the best we can to get that done. And then talked about the fueling situation there and the fact that our FBO is no longer really there and has a desire to get out of the fuel business, and the tanks are kind of old. So at a point in time, as a council, we're going to need to make some decisions as a community, what we want to do for the airport to support fueling. So Jason has asked the, you know, Midwest Aviation for kind of their flowage reports so we can actually get a better print on where we're at. And I think he's still waiting for those. But a lot of good things happening out there. There's no complaints from tenants, which is always a plus. And we also worked on moving forward with getting some design into, for the, kind of the maintenance building, which would be the first addition to the, to the patch on the east side, kind of off the bridge, the new bridge that comes off from the US Bank area. So a lot of positive feed there. There's energy and I think a lot of positivity. And hopefully, we see things continue to move forward. I know that one of the things with construction of the building we're proposing is there's a need by some of the larger aircraft users that don't actually base here but visit here to have a building enough that when they need to put the plane in to kind of protect it, that we have a building also that's large enough that it can accept a couple of the larger aircraft that come in on a pretty regular basis. So, and then on the Merritt Center, I would just ask people to go take a peek at what's going on there. With Jasmine's reported through the administrative report, there's still a lot of really good things happening out there. I won't drill into them. But take a minute and look through that administrative report and just kind of see that we're continuing to get good visits and a lot of good training going. So she's doing a great job at Merritt. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Steve?
No Cable Commission, Community Services Advisory Board met, but I was unable to attend because of work obligations. Ilya did not.
John?
Planning Commission canceled their meeting for tomorrow night. And public counting is next week.
John?
The only one of mine that met was Diversity Equity and Inclusion. And much of the meeting was spent talking with the facilitator for the World Cafe that's coming up on the 15th as part of the Cultures on the Prairie. So just a word of encouragement out there to all of us to take part in the cultures of the Prairie. If you haven't before, it's very educational. It's good to listen to what's going on. And I say, you learn a lot. And that's February 15th. And you can get online and register. That's it.
Okay, Russ?
Might have not met, Mr. Mayor.
And?
Might have not met.
Okay, we'll move then to Councilmember Indigai, Ms. Craig?
Mr. Mayor.
Steve?
Just remind people to use this fine weather to clear their sidewalks as a runner and an active pedestrian. It's tough to run on the sidewalk still because of ice and snow and now gigantic puddles. So that'll freeze quickly again. So please clean up your stuff.
Doug?
I'm going to piggyback just for a moment on your appointment to committee and commission. On our sheet here on our computer, we've got 15 open spots on various commission boards throughout the city, anywhere from Cable Commission to, you know, the senior center commission, airport, community services convention of victors, library, the Merritt Center, Planning Commission, and Police Advisory Board. You know, years ago, when I was first on the council, we already had more than enough candidates to fill spots on these various boards and commission. And over the last year or so, we've been, you know, looking under every rock and fighting tooth and nail to get people to apply, you know, to be on these boards and commissions. And they, they all fill a very important role within the city. And so, you know, if you're watching, if you're listening, you know, in the next few days or a week to cable TV and to this program, consider thinking about, you know, applying to a border commission. We really could use your help. And, you know, everybody thinks, well, I don't know anything. But a different perspective on, you know, on these boards and commissions is very appreciated. And we're very welcomed. So, thank you.
Well said, Don. Jim?
I have nothing to say.
Russ?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
John?
Just one thing I wanted to talk about. Back on January 27th, Minnesota Housing awarded a grant to Broadmoor Valley of $500,000. That's a grant that was made based on an application submitted by, I suppose, Sher Holtz Incorporated or whatever the name of the Broadmoor is. And you've seen some articles in the paper about it, some detail on that. That was part of 12 different manufactured home communities that were given funding, a total of about $7.5 million going out to those 12. Part of the two-year, half of the two-year commitment that legislator made to, legislation is made towards improving the infrastructure on manufactured home parks. In the application, which the city did not see, board members don't see, just reviewed by staff, it was brought up that the city was considering contributing to that fund as well. I don't believe there was any discussion with the city about that. There was no applications that were made to the city. And it was also implied MMU might be making a contribution through some work. As far as I know, there was no request made to MMU. The grant that was given was awarded with no consideration to the city taking part at all. In other words, there is no requirement in the grant application that the city do any funding along with this or that MMU does. It is a standalone grant. It has been requested. Minnesota Housing is well aware. They work very well with Attorney General's Office and well aware of the lawsuit that Attorney General has against Broadmoor Valley. And so they've asked, although they have their own staff that monitors the work and sees, to see that it's done properly before they make any payments, they did ask that the city get involved in the, I believe, in the scope of the work and just monitoring that the work is done in a correct fashion. You know, if we look at what we've got in our packet tonight, you know, we've got a couple of street projects that are well over $1 million for the amount of street that's in Broadmoor Valley. A half a million dollars is certainly not going to cut it for what needs to be done, along with all the sewer and the electrical and everything else in the water. So no indication why the request was only for $500,000. Some other ones were awarded up higher than that. So there was no limitation on the request. But just, you know, some of the work's going to get done. This is granted so the community, the citizens that live in there can have a good spot to live in and make some improvements. But I just wanted to make it known for sure that there is no requirement by Minnesota Housing that the city of Marshall take part in any of the costs that are involved. But they have been asked to help monitor some of that, making sure that work is done correctly. And the work gets done as intended. So if there's any questions, certainly glad to take whatever I can. So, thanks.
Well, thank you, John, and thank you for your expertise on this and your service on the Minnesota Housing Board of Board. So thank you. Anything else?
No.
The, I'll just have a couple of things. As we all know, January 1st, last Monday, was the opening day of Minnesota Legislature. There's always a number of things that impact our local region, our local community, all the way from local government aid to highway funding. There's, I would say, there's three items that are specific of interest in Marshall. One, two of those are bonding requests. One is for a facility planning at SMSU for a human wellness facility. And the other, of course, is for the Merritt Center, the expansion of the venues and the training venues at the Merritt Center. And of course, we have the request for the local sales tax. Now, the SMSU planning and Merritt Center that was included in the governor's proposal, bonding proposal, the, neither the House or the Senate or either caucus has, to my knowledge, has released what their bonding recommendations are. Our sales tax extension and our Coalition Greater Minnesota City's representative, Marty Schaefer, I think are working hard on that and trying to secure sponsors. Hopefully, it will be a local legislative legislators that will sponsor our sales tax extension. This will require advocacy of a number of people, including our council and our administrative staff. So this will be a busy year. There are several advocacy opportunities that are coming up, including the Coalition Greater Minnesota City Legislative Day, which I believe is March 4th. And the League of Minnesota Cities will have a legislative day. I think that is later. I don't recall the exact date of that right now. And there'll be also opportunities if, as the bills go through the various hearing process for hearings and testimonies and that type of thing. So this could be a very active legislative year locally. So with that, Tim, I know you've been sitting here all evening. The, I know you have some specific concerns on probably the end of your street and drainage and snow removal. So, you know, I assume that you and our staff have had discussions about that, right? Okay. With that, then, we'll move then to staff reports. Sharon?
I just want to mention, kind of a follow-up to your mentioning of legislative work, is that we do have a new committee. It's the Marshall Aquatic Center Committee that's been formed. Our next meeting is March 9th. And Councilmembers Meister and Lozinski are on it. And we'll probably talk about indoor recreation facility and the resolution as a whole. But the focus is the aquatic center. And one of the things I think we'll have on the agenda is future support group or advocacy group. We really need a group that's separate from the city to promote the aquatic center, if we're successful in sales tax special legislation. So we'll bring that up and also do some updates. And we are meeting, hopefully, at a time that works for Dr. Meister. It's a little bit later than normal. I know that you still may have some conflicts, but hopefully it works. So looking forward to meeting on a regular basis on that topic.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Just reminding the council that the comp plan open house is Wednesday, February 16th, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, right here. So if you can make it great. As Councilman Schaefer pointed out, we did have our first meeting about the SRE building out at the airport, the snow removal equipment and maintenance building. Be a lot of challenges with that project, and we'll work through it. The biggest challenge will be building a building that is big enough to satisfy a lot of our needs while also still being able to utilize FAA and Min dot Aero funding. That'll be a big challenge, because we could certainly build it bigger than what we're going to be allowed to. But we'll have to work that out. I concur with Councilman Ed Blum. We do, the airport commission in particular is going to be stretched pretty soon. I think in May, we're going to lose two more members, and we'll be down to three. So that will be a little bit of a concern. So if anybody knows anybody who's interested, we are looking. The Planning Commission is down as well and has been, I think, since I've been here largely. So, and we have started to meet to discuss Broadmoor and the utility needs. We had a meeting this morning at MMU with wastewater, water, electric staff, the whole group, and try to work to find out what we can deal with, what we can compromise on, what we can't, because we do understand that the emphasis for those dollars will be on the roads. That's been made abundantly clear. So I think that's all that I've got.
Okay, and Dennis?
I think the past couple of weeks, I've spoken to more state agencies than I have in my entire life. With Helena, that always comes up. The Minnesota Department of Agriculture continues to review the action plan and will keep us informed as to how that works its way through. On Broadmoor Valley, we talked to the Department of Labor and Industry regarding repair versus removal, replacement. We're still trying to get a handle on what can and cannot be done by way of manufactured home repairs. And then also some significant time with the Housing Finance Agency regarding that $500,000 grant and the requirement of scope of work definition by the city. But then, I think in there, there's the term, "city must sign off upon completion." So until there is the certification from the city that all of the work has been properly completed, there will be no payment. And so we have to work with the contractors to put everything in place to make sure that that is done correctly. Had some discussions yesterday with the Boundary Adjustment Agency for the state of Minnesota regarding the annexation of property on the east side of North 7th Street, which will be the location of the future solar farm for MMU. And I know they're still looking for financing. That's still the biggest issue. But we need to annex that property into the city of Marshall. So we're beginning the annexation process and significant work on the Block 11 development. There will be significant number of actions coming forward to both HRA and the city of Marshall over the next several meetings as we progress with that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any questions for Dennis?
And I did meet with some residents who came in today whose dog, her neighbor's dog gets onto their yard and uses it as a dump site. And so they're asking what can be done. And it is a violation of city ordinance. So yes, there is consideration of.
Well, thanks for cleaning that up.
Yes. You get the highs and lows. You just never know what's going to happen when you unlock that door in the morning.
Was that a high or was that a low?
The high point of today.
Oh, okay. Okay, so the remaining items, you have the administrative reports, the information items, including the building permits and the listing of upcoming meetings. Is there anything else that come up at the regular meeting? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
By Craig, seconded by Steve. To adjourn, discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.[1775.73]